Rep Cahill, my attorney will go there for that.
(inaudible)
I want to call to order the October 24th meeting of Building and Grounds Subcommittee. We're going to discuss the unusing Schumaker School parking lot for a snow emergency. Roll call please.
Mr. Cassianas?
Present.
Ms. Gately?
Present.
And Chairman Ford?
Present.
Observing is Ms. Coppola, Mr. Nicholson, and Mayor McGee.
Councilor Lozey reached out to request that we allow parking in the Schumaker parking lot. Before I did anything, I spoke to Mayor McGee, Bob Stillian, Jay Walsh, Joe Smart, and also Councilor Lozey, who I talked to again last night. And he's had a request from some of the constituents that live right around the school to use the parking lot. That's a pretty good-sized parking lot. But I told him the best we can do is put it on like a temporary basis, that if they abide by the rules, we're going to get a sign put up that's going to have the rules right on the sign. If they abide by the rules and there's no problem plowing and causing delay at schools, then they'll continue to stay open. If there's any issues, then we'll go back to putting it on the emergency parking lot. So, Mayor McGee?
Now, just to give a history, and I think everybody here knows this, but I think it's important. We had numerous meetings last year because there were issues related to this, you know, we had the school lots, and then there were definitely issues on some of the schools. So we had numerous issues, and I know the superintendent, as well as many of the people you mentioned, emergency management, to try and come up with what was a fair proposal. You know, the councilors, the commissioner of ISD, emergency management, all those players were at the table, and I know you were as well, John. So I think it's important to note that the Wyoming lot has also been made available for free, even though it's a paid parking. And I think you're right, on a temporary basis, taking a look at this, it is a bigger lot, and it seemed like there were probably less issues than most of the other lots. But I think you laid it out right. I think on a temporary basis, we put it in with clear parameters of what that means, both in terms of how you park, when you park there, and then just as importantly, that it doesn't impact the ability to plow the lot or open the school on time. And so I think those are a number of it, just think, points that I think were made, I think, on a temporary basis. Recognizing that, and recognizing that lot may be a lot that works if those rules are followed. I think the, you know, it sounds like you're making that recommendation, so. But I just wanted to, one, show, I like lay out the history again, what we had done, and we really looked seriously at all of the lots related to the, both the potential for use, as well as the schools that absolutely don't work.
I figure what Joe Smart said, there'd be signage, and Wayne Lozey said he'd talk to the constituents, hopefully we'll avoid any problems. But based on that, is someone, Ms. Gately?
What time would they be out by? Like, you know, what would the time?
Well, it'd be the same as when they were in the other parking lot, it'd be 6:00 a.m. There'll be signage on the lot, and Wayne said he'd talk to the people that asked for the parking as well.
And I think that's a great question, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. It depends on the storm too. So, and we have, we all meet, and superintendents on the calls, and so we, depending on when the storm is going to be hitting, what the timing of the end of the storm will be, there's a certain timeline, so. And I think that information will be available as well, so it doesn't have to necessarily be 6:00 a.m., depending on when the storm ends, when the snow emergency ends. And the timing will be based on the snow emergency, whether it ends at nine, at night, or after nine, and whether school is in, will be happening the next morning. So it's not necessarily just 6:00 a.m., but if it is within that timeframe, then it would be a 6:00 a.m. time to get out of there. But it is, it's a flexible piece, based on the specifics of each storm. And then the parameters of when you would leave, based on when the storm ends and when the timeline is, would be. And I think it's an important point to make, while we're talking about this, that, again, the RAVE.
Yep.
There's about 8,000 people now that have signed up for RAVE, that's the emergency information program of the city. And I think that's really important to lay that out, so more people will sign up, because you get that information on your phone, you know, right at the time it's happening, we send the information out, so you know when the snow emergency will start, when the lots will be open, and when the snow emergency will end. So the more that, the more people in the city that sign up for RAVE, the better it is for us to get that information out, so people know, you know, the timeline of the storms and what's happening.
Anyone else want to make a comment?
Well done.
Okay, seeing that, I'd like to make, see someone make a motion to the effect that we open up the Schumaker school lot during snow emergencies on a temporary basis.
Okay, who you want to do it for, you go.
So I'd like to make a motion to open up the Schumaker school lot for emergency parking on a temporary basis.
Second?
Roll call.
Mr. Cassianas?
Yes.
And Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Is that recommended to the full committee?
Yes, recommended to the full committee. Motion re-adjourned.
Second?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion re-adjourned, made second and third.
Don't jump right in.
Re-adjourned.
Don't jump right in, Lauren. Everyone's all hesitant. What do you do?
Call to all of the committee, school committee meeting, October 24th, 2019. I'd ask that you stand and join in the salute of the flag and then remain standing, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask that you stand and join the school committee in a moment of silence for Mary F. Bancefield, retired cafeteria worker who passed away on October 3rd, 2019, Anna T. Tibbetts, retired clerk who passed away on October 6th of 2019, Charles P. Wilkinson, former principal who passed away on October 8th of 2019. Thank you. First on the agenda is the minutes.
Make a motion that we accept the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee on September 26th, 2019.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes are accepted.
Make a motion that we accept the 14th regular meeting on September 26th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes are accepted.
And make a motion to accept the 14th regular meeting executive session on September 26th, 2019.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes are accepted.
Make a motion to accept Policy Subcommittee on September 30th, 2019.
Second.
Second.
There is a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes are accepted.
Make a motion to accept the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee meeting on October 10th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes are accepted.
Make a motion to accept the 15th regular meeting on October 10th, 2019.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes are accepted. Next on the agenda is appointments. Superintendent Tuttwiler?
Yep, thank you. And there are two. I don't see either one of the new appointees, but I'm happy to share about their appointments. The first is Scott Parker, who's been appointed the PC LAN manager and desktop support manager. And the second is Jerry Berrios, who is the lead case manager, a homeless liaison that's based here as part of the SEEMER grant. So I congratulate them both on their appointments and look forward to working with them.
Great. Congratulations to the, to the new appointees. Next on the agenda is update on the Uniform Initiative. Dr. Tuttwiler?
Yep. So at our last meeting for school year 1819, I offered a snapshot of where we stood relative to the uniform pilot and the superintendent's report. And by way of brief reminder, we launched the uniform pilot at Callahan and Aborn Elementary Schools in the fall of 2017. Anecdotally, the pilot began at both schools with some energy and enthusiasm. Unfortunately, both were short-lived. At this point, I can say definitively that the pilot has naturally expired at both schools. I've had the opportunity to speak with both principals and both expressed in no uncertain terms that there's a lack of interest in the pilot in their school communities. I've had occasion to visit Callahan this year. I did not observe one student wearing the uniform. The same is so at Aborn. What is more, the lack of interest was at the level that there was not enough requests for shirts and other school uniform items to meet the minimum requirement to place an order last year as well as this fall. It is the principals' belief that the following factors caused the pilot to be unsuccessful. Lack of student interest, inflexibility of ordering options, meaning there are only certain points during the year at which you could order a new shirt. You can't just go online, "Oh, we need a couple more shirts," and order. There were only certain points. The optional feature of the pilot, meaning students weren't required to wear them. And then even though both principals, the principal of Callahan and principal at Aborn are new and weren't there when the program began, neither was really clear on what the measures of success were. And so last year, I recommended, in that superintendent's report, surveying fifth-grade students and teachers to gather specific feedback. I didn't bother. By virtue of the fact that no students wear the uniform and there isn't much talk about or express interest in them, that tells me, and frankly, all of us, everything that we need to know. Certainly, there are other potential factors, but these are the three, excuse me, the four that they cite as being the most impactful. As I mentioned to you in last year's update, there was a review of data to see if there were notable changes in areas that one would suspect would be impacted by the pilot or by uniforms. I pulled attendance and discipline data from both schools over the past three years. Now, clearly, there's a number of factors that influence both of those, but at a high level, there was ultimately no difference in attendance over the identified years. There are differences in discipline data, but it is negligible or not reflecting a trend. At this point, I would recommend formally ending the pilot. Fact is, it is already, it has ended on its own. Personally, I don't have a problem with the idea of uniforms in schools if it's that school community's wish. As such, were we to rethink this approach, I would suggest, first, broadly surveying the school community to determine interest, but also, and maybe more importantly, commitment. Case in point, Callahan has 430 students. The survey to determine interest did not even capture half of the families, and not all of those who responded were in favor. So that would be one. Then I would identify specific criteria for success. And finally, I would remove the optional feature and fund it fully. I wouldn't put it on families. If it is believed that uniforms are an important part of school culture and will result in measurable outcomes to impact school culture, it can't be optional. So that's where we stand.
Member Nicholson, member Ford, and then member Capola.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler, for that update. I also just want to thank the principals who implemented the pilot, as well as the parents, particularly some of the PTO parents, who were huge helps in running those surveys and getting things off the ground. You know, when we have a district of this size, it is really a great opportunity for us to try new ideas and do a pilot like that. And I'm glad that we were able to do that here. And when you do a pilot, you have to understand that you're testing to see if something works or if it doesn't work. And that's good data and feedback that we now have. So I'm grateful for that. You know, I, when I started working on this, I think it was driven by parent interest. And I think that's how we arrived at those schools. That's how we started. And so that first reason that you mentioned about how, the reason why it's now stopped is, to me, the most important. I mean, because if we're responding to parent interest and that parent interest is no longer there, then there goes the program, I think. The other reasons that you mentioned are all, like you said in your follow-up, all things that we could address in terms of optionality or the metrics of success, the how to get uniforms, whatever. Those are all fixable problems. But if we don't have the original parent interest, I can't imagine a scenario in which it's going to be successful. So I would just say, you know, I too have an open mind to those other suggestions that you made if you were going to make it work and would be on the lookout for other parent groups that wanted to drive that forward. Because, you know, it is a big commitment from the parents. It requires a big commitment from the parents to make something like this work. So I'm glad we tried it. And I'm glad that we have good data and results that we can learn from. So thank you.
Number Ford?
I've always been in favor of the uniform policy, and I would definitely support it. But, you know, my question is, even if we buy the uniforms, can it be mandated legally? I don't think it can, because I think it's been tried out in Cleveland and it got shot down. And I know back in, back several years ago, we had at Lynn English, Principal Filer got a donation, a sizable donation, bought shirts for everyone in the school and with the intention that they'd wear them every day. And it, you know, it started out like a house fire. It was great. Everybody wore them. They looked great. But then, as time went on, it just dissipated to the point that it doesn't happen anymore. And I just think, that was my question. I don't think it can be legally mandated.
Member Capola?
Well, that was my question, I think, Mr. Ford. But I'd just like an answer from attorney, my house, in regards to mandating it.
Department of Education's given numerous letters relative to this issue. Basically, all programs that they have found to, they've agreed with, have an opt-out portion. They can opt out of the program. So you cannot mandate that everybody has to wear the uniform and penalize them if they don't. So in effect, you cannot legislate that.
Thank you.
Member Sadoway, then member Nichols.
You said that the program started at seventeen, your school year 1718?
I believe so.
Okay. So I wanted to see if we can delve a little bit more into the data, see if maybe kids that were in the fourth grade when it started, if they were involved more so in the uniforms. And then as they aged out and went to middle school, that's why it didn't follow along. It fizzled out because the ones that were interested were no longer there. Because fourth and fifth grade, that's when you start really caring about what you're wearing. My daughter did. You know, the Jordans, no, we didn't have that in the third or the second grade. So what kind of disappointed me is that you, I understand that the program expired naturally, but I think a survey could have captured at least something. I like that you are saying that you, if you're going to move forward with it because it's something that you support, you want to survey a school to see if they're interested. I like that you're doing that, but I would have still liked some feedback possibly from parents. But if those kids have aged out and they're no longer in Callahan, you probably can't get that data because they're in other schools.
True. And remember that the proposal was to survey current fifth-grade students. So, I mean, we do have those students there. And, you know, if you direct, if you really would like for me to, I can. But I can tell you, the principals know the students and their parent community well, and they've received no-
The principals are great. I agree with you. Principal Kennison came in and spoke to us a few times about uniforms.
I'm sorry, who?
Principal Kennison at Callahan.
Yes, yes, yes.
And he answered every question that we had. He was a great person to come and speak. And, you know, he said he'll continue with the pilot, and that's why we have this data and we have this update. So it's a good thing. I do believe that something that you didn't mention, you said that the not enough interest, the inflexibility to order, that obviously makes sense. The optional, which you want to make non-optional if possible. But I also believe that the cost probably was a big factor as well.
The clothing itself was pretty inexpensive. And the, both principals said that they did not receive any feedback from parents on the cost being prohibitive. If I remember correctly, it was like $13 or something like that. It was very inexpensive.
For a uniform or for a shirt?
The shirt, which was the uniform.
Okay. So it was just a shirt?
Just the top, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any other questions? Thoughts? Next on the agenda is a vote to support House Bill Number 2654, presented by member Castellanos.
Yeah, so yes, this was brought up earlier in the school year September. I think we're all aware of the issues with vaping. We have, we have a four-month ban from the governor's office. There was a bill, H2654, that was presented at the State House. It was an Act to Minimize Youth Vaping and Support Addiction Prevention Services. This bill is, it's aimed to not only provide excise tax to these vaping companies, but to hold these companies accountable for the wrath that it's left behind with some of our youth in our schools. As a social worker, I have clients who are addicted to vaping and e-cigarettes. These same Juul pods are highly addictive. They're in the hands of kids. And I believe this has been an issue in our district for some time now. And the steps that the public health and the state is currently making, it's vital that we also, as a school committee, we also identify this need to support the State House. And I think it's something that I think will benefit in the long run. It's just a support to, I know the bill is not fully up and running, but it'll be good to be part of the support and to endorse that as a collective body to protect our students. I think that's our, some of our job when we look at our roles as leaders in the community. And I think holding these companies accountable, it's very important. So I hope you guys had time to review the bill and some of the perks of getting that bill pushed along. I would like to support, and it's vital to prevention. And I think that's a very important piece to this, is the prevention. And when that four-month ban is lifted, I'd rather be proactive than reactive.
You have a motion?
I can, I'll make a motion to support House Bill Number 2654 for vaping and prevention.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Requires a roll call.
Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
Ms. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gately?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadoway?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, Mr. Nicholson.
Thank you. So for a couple meetings now, we've discussed the feminine hygiene product idea to offer free feminine hygiene products and restrooms. And I think the plan, as I understand it, is to try to gather everybody's questions so that we can submit those to ISD and the nurses' office so that they can have some time to digest them and come back and either present responses or submit responses, depending on the level of inquiry, and see if we can incorporate this into the planning for the budget for the spring. So I have started to receive some questions, which I'll kind of run through. And then, if, to the extent that people have- to the extent that people have other questions, you can raise them tonight, or maybe we can submit them through Mary to go to ISD, or the nurses' office, or whoever else we think would be helpful to weigh in on this. So one of the questions that I have heard has been about the cost estimate, whether that was specifically for every single bathroom in the secondary schools, and if so, whether how the cost would change if we were to select particular, like a strategic subset of the bathrooms that we thought were most relevant to do that. Another question I got is about how to think about the potential for, or risk of abuse of a free product, and how other places have tackled that, approached that. I actually, this is something that I've seen come up in one of the districts that have implemented this, in the city of Providence, they've implemented this, and then used dispensaries that are particularly, that are timed or staggered, so that you can't take more than a certain amount at a time as a way to address this. And that's actually information that you all now have, that Ms. Ennis has distributed to the committee so that you can see, she just sent it by email. So you guys can look at that. Another question was around feedback from nurses on, and this has come up from Dr. Tawala, on the potential misservice gaps or just generally. The current cost of products that we're currently stocking in the nurses' office, and how that would relate to what we think the cost would be going forward, and then whether or not there's any units available from prior installations, prior iterations of this kind of policy. So, any other questions now, or add to the list, or I'm sure Mary would be happy to receive them by email?
Member Capola, then Member Sadowite.
Okay. I support it, but I think that we should hear from Kathy McNulty, the head of the nurses, and how are they paying for their supply now?
Yep.
Would be important to know. And also, I feel as though maybe it doesn't need to be in every spot, you know, for a cost reason. And because it's, we're looking at such a cost, is there any problem if I make a motion that we move it to a finance subcommittee, just so that we have it someplace, and that we continue to look at it? You know, once we get those answers, whether we have Kathy come in at a subcommittee meeting?
That's fine with me. I mean, finance committee because it's the, because of the financial implications.
Financial piece of it, yeah. I know you said for the spring, but I thought before you were thinking of now, which, what I was thinking, that if it was still now having Kevin give us, you know, where money would come from.
Yeah.
Once we see a smaller cost.
That does, because I think if we, no, that's exactly right. I'd love to have all our questions answered now, like this fall, winter, so that by the spring, we can just do it.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm sure.
That's my sense.
Okay, great.
Member Sadowite? Thank you.
That was going to be my question. Where does the money come now for medical supplies? Does it come, is it from the nurses' budget?
Supply line.
So this isn't going to take away a nurse position that we need in the district? Okay, so if the cost is great, you'll just increase the budget in the, okay. Sorry, Kevin, I should have asked you.
I know a few things.
Other questions? And I'll just, just a point I'd like to make as well. I think the legislation is pending, so it would be helpful to follow along what's going on with the legislation, what information they found, what they're looking at a statewide plan, which would be helpful as we're making those decisions. So I think utilizing the information from the legislature, and the legislation maybe from the sponsors of the bill, as well as what's happened at the public hearing related to that.
And just to follow up, I know that there's the concern with missed opportunities with the nurse, but if we're selecting bathrooms that are close by the nurses' office, that might help with that situation.
Member Nicholson, then Member Ford.
I'll defer.
Oh, Member Ford.
Just, are we looking at just middle, I mean, middle and high school? Are you also looking at the possibility in elementary schools, is that, yeah?
We can ask the nurses' office, but I wouldn't think it would be.
I think that would be a trip to the nurse.
Okay, that's a question.
At that age.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Member Nicholson?
I would like to make a motion to refer this issue and the questions that we just went over, and any additional questions that members submit to the finance subcommittee to hear from ISD, either in written or personal form, and the nurses' office, in written or personal form, to have a subcommittee meeting within the next couple months.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's referred to the committee. Thank you. Next on the agenda, Member Nicholson, you also have No Ceilings program.
Thank you.
Is on the agenda.
Yes. So obviously, we've heard from Mr. Seiforth tonight, I don't have much to add, except to say that I think this is a wonderful program, that's gotten great results, and has a lot of support, I think, from all this year. And my understanding is that we, everyone wanted to see it happen this year, and that while the, not all the details have been finalized, that's really close to being the case. And so I will, you know, I guess we'll wait for other updates, but I do want to thank, as Mr. Seiforth said, the administration and your team for working so well with the program, to support it and grow it and believe in it. And obviously, to thank Mr. Seiforth for his leadership and his commitment to the city and its students, and the amazing results that he's getting, so.
Member Sadowite, then Member Gailey.
I also, we thanked the administration and Tony, but I want to thank the student athletes that are actually taking the program and taking it seriously, and making sure that their grades are their priority, and making sure that they're taking advantage of all these resources. It's a good foundation for the students to be able to have someone like Tony to look up to, and the people that he tries to bring into their lives. And I think that Tony's doing a wonderful job, I've known him since high school, he's always been determined, he's always been just a very positive person. And I just wanted to thank you as well, because there's only so much we can do with Title One money, but hopefully we can work something out.
Member Gailey?
I'd like to also piggyback on that and say, this program is sort of like what I talked about when I first got on the committee. I asked for an after-school program that included homework help for students, because students' parents really don't know our curriculum, and they need help with the curriculum. So a student could go home with their homework and go to their parents and say, can you help me with this homework? And there is absolutely not really help because the curriculum has changed so drastically. So I just think Tony brought in a program that was a similar mindset to what I was thinking, it helped all the student athletes, and I would like to see it, like, expand. I want to see it expand to all the middle schools and high schools, so that those students that are in great need for help with homework, so they can be successful, would bring up our MCAS scores, it will help students to understand things. If we could expand on that, we're getting a lot of monies in from the state, and I'd like us to look into that, and maybe Tony could be in charge. That's what I'm thinking. But I so appreciate him doing this, the athletes probably appreciate him, and I just can't see losing that. So I'm glad that you're working with him.
Member Castellanos, then Member Ford.
I want to thank you personally for taking time to meet with Tony. I know it's a really difficult time when you got, you know, a lot of different processes that we have to really take easy, and we have to communicate effectively, and I think that's something that I appreciate. Being a student athlete, it's difficult, especially the student athletes that we have in our district, sometimes a sport might keep these kids on track to actually graduate and to maybe pursue a college education, or higher opportunities. It's vital that we explore programs like No Ceilings, and to really invest and figure out creative ways to make it happen, to deliver. Not only is a partner and vendor that Tony is, he's been someone from the neighborhood that is very highly respected, and we really appreciate his work, especially to echo Member Sadowite's comment about the student athletes, because they've been committed. I've seen success stories from Tony's program throughout the years, and it's been remarkable, inspiring. It's something that, it hits me right in the heart, because I was a student athlete that, I was fortunate enough to have people like Tony in my life to get me in to do my homework and to help too to me, and even when they volunteer their time to do so. And he has, he's grown so much success, and I think a part of that partnership was there was no sustainability mechanism implemented, everyone wanted his services. And I think it's a growth process for everyone, I think, in terms of just partnership development. It's important to kind of, to have that ongoing communication of what growth looks like, maybe a growth plan in the future to prevent that from happening. I've had, all of us probably have had so many constituents reach out about, you know, what happened with this program, and we definitely would love to see this work out. And we'll thank Tony for coming tonight, and all the efforts that the district has made to hopefully facilitate a process that does foster this to happen, to continue on in our district.
Thank you. Member Ford?
Yeah, I just, I've attended a couple of the sessions down at Lynn English, and I was really impressed, not with the enthusiasm and the buy-in, I thought it might be a little lighter, but they were very intense. And I'm a big fan of grade point averages being tied into athletics, because to me, it's a great carrot. If the kid wants to play ball, let them work to earn it, and it seems to work.
Next on the agenda is ratification of votes taken in the Building and Ground Subcommittee.
Yeah, there was a vote taken, one vote taken. It was to allow, on a temporary basis, for the Shoemaker School parking area to be used in a snow emergency. Signs will be posted, the users will be well-advised as to what the ground rules are going to be, and if they want to continue to use it, they'll have to abide by the rules.
And that's on a temporary basis?
Yes. Make a motion and move it to the full committee?
Motion, ma'am.
Second.
Requires a roll call?
Roll call.
Mr. Cassianus?
Yes.
Mr. Capola?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Gailey?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is Communications and Information.
That's me. So first, I'm going to go off script for two things. First, and most importantly, tonight is Brianna Bishop's Last Night with Us, which saddens me deeply. But I just want to thank you. I mean, you didn't just sit and listen, you contributed, and you made us think, and you've just been amazing. And I know this is your senior year, and you're going to go off and do wonderful things, and I just can't wait to hear about your, the wonderful things that you do. So we wish you well.
Thank you guys for having me. This was an amazing opportunity, and you guys have showed me a lot, and I've been able to sit, listen, and be a part, and thank you for including me and hearing the perspective of a student.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. Great job, Brianna.
Thank you.
The second is, I have a little prop, which looks like mayonnaise or butter, but it is not that, it is goo.
Slime.
Yeah, slime, from the STEM Fair, which happened this afternoon at the Tech Annex, St. Mary's Kip YMCA. This was a partnered effort to bring attention to STEM Week, which this is, and the theme for STEM Week is See Yourself in STEM. And we just really wanted to highlight the wonderful things that are happening in our schools and that kids are doing that relate to STEM careers. And so, at the Tech Annex, which, you know, again, as I said to the mayor, it's not a competition, but I thought theirs was the best. All seventeen shops were represented, and they had student representatives there, putting on activities for younger students to learn about how, what they're learning in the trade, and those particular activities relate to specific careers. And it also was the advisory night, so you actually had people from industry there talking to parents as well. It was really, really a nice event. So I want to shout out Carissa Karakides, who continues to impress us in ways unimaginable. You have a report in your packet, and I will draw from that. Clearing the strategy for increasing the racial and linguistic diversity of the Lynn Public Schools staff is a year-one action item calling for administration to partner with the Lynn Teachers Union to explore means to hire candidates earlier. Historically, all available positions were posted on June 1st and then again on June 5th internally, thus allowing for teachers based on seniority to bid on available positions. One challenge with this process is the timing. The internal process normally concludes in late June, which results in building principals and directors beginning their hiring for the ensuing year and early July. Many districts, both urban and suburban, engage hiring processes much earlier, typically between the months of February and May. Needless to say that the candidate pool is much smaller in late summer months. I'm pleased to share that we've reached an agreement with the Lynn Teachers Union that will allow for outside, the outside hiring process to begin much sooner. Beginning this school year, the first posting is tentatively scheduled for March 16th, and the second posting is tentatively scheduled for March 23rd. We suspect that this process will be complete by early April, allowing for the early, allowing for the hiring process for known openings to begin nearly three months earlier than in previous years. This is a significant change, and one that will require lots of attention to detail. Lots of attention to detail. Lots. It's my plan to present to you a timeline, much as I did, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. It will also necessitate a budget timeline that allows a clearer view of potential openings by early spring. It is my plan to present to you a timeline, much as I did last year, on or before the December 14th meeting. It is our view that the early hiring process will allow us to seek and hire the best candidates for our students, and that includes bilingual or multilingual candidates and candidates of color. It will take time for us to refine this early hiring process, but the ability to engage in that aspect of our work much earlier will be impactful immediately. There will be more formal reporting as the process takes shape. Also, relative to meeting the needs of our professionals, the Lynn Public Schools has become a site for interested paraprofessionals to take the para-pro assessment, finally. Current, yeah. Currently, to become a permanent paraprofessional, a candidate needs at least forty-eight college credits. Successful performance on the para-pro assessment will suffice in lieu of the college credit requirement. Further, successful performance will allow a candidate to earn a seniority date and become eligible for benefits. It's really a good thing. In recent months, there's been some discussion around means to digitally capture parent participation at school events. Doing so can generate useful data as it relates to how we engage parents, the nature and substance of every, of events that they attend, and areas in need of improvement. At present, as part of compliance requirements, all Title One-sponsored parent engagement events require a signing sheet. The signing sheets are kept on file in the event of an audit. The proposal is to bring that data to the 21st century in some sort of way. Strategic Initiative 4.4 calls for the district to engage families to increase opportunities for family enrichment programs that support student learning. Rather than create a separate initiative, work of this sort could be placed neatly as part of this initiative and the action planning therein. I will see to it. Finally, in the September 26, 2019 Superintendent's Report, I informed, oh, I'm super excited, I'm excited about all of this, but this I'm very excited about. I informed you that we applied for a Department of Elementary and Secondary education grant, the focus of which was to do some in-depth thinking and planning to formalize the after-school vocational offerings, currently the TAP program. I'm pleased to report that that effort was successful, we will receive $100,000 to dedicate toward that effort. As the ideas take shape, I will communicate via this platform, and that is all.
Then Member Castellanos.
Thank you. That's all, that's all great news. Thank you- Uh, thank you to the administration team, the teachers' union, uh, for that first update, and then also to the community enrichment program for their work on the, the para-pro assessment. Um, my question was just quickly on the, uh, parent, uh, attendance data, just in terms of what we should expect in terms of, like, what the next steps would be in terms of, for the initiative under that, uh, Strategic Initiative four-point-four, like, when we should expect the next update?
Um, that's a good question. I don't know. Um, so I'd, I'd, I'd have to go back and look and see when the action planning for that is set to happen, uh, and when it does, there have been one, uh, two, um, teams on which I've participated in developing the action plan. I plan to participate in this one as well, so I'll see to it that this is a, a feature in the, in the discussion.
Great.
But I will let you know as soon as, as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Member Castellanos?
Uh, thank you Superintendent for your report and communication. I think it's wonderful to see the partnership between the teachers' union and yourself and your, and your leadership team, it's wonderful. I know, uh, being in the room with them, it's, it's, it's always a good proactive conversation, definitely. Um, I'm very excited about that last paragraph. Um, congratulations on, on, on successfully, successfully gaining that grant. Um, also, um, a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money for, you know, to figure out how to turn these ideas into, uh, I guess, uh, what kind of, what I'm trying to say, at, for an after-school vocational offering, who's gonna be part of the, so who's gonna be shaping those ideas? Like, when we say, okay, the effort to do this, who's gonna be involved in that process?
So if you like, I could, um, either in the next superintendent's report, which would be on our meeting at the fourteenth, uh, or if you want something more formal, we can do a presentation on it. Um, in the grant, uh, which I don't have committed to memory, there are specifics around, um, which, um, stakeholders will be, and were, you know, ideally invited to the table to have conversations around putting those programs together. Uh, if you recall, there are three programs that we were looking to make more formal after-school. I believe it was IT, um, the medical or health assisting program, and then, um, precision machining or advanced, uh, manufacturing, uh, which are high, 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 um, need, uh, areas. Uh, so I, I, I don't want to guess about, um, what was in the grant related to who's gonna be part of that, but we can do a presentation on it, or I can add it to my superintendent's report.
That'd be great, yeah, well, either way, either one.
Member Sadoway?
Uh, thank you, um, Dr. Tottwiler and the Lynn Teachers Union for, for doing this. It's, it's, it's impressive. I know we spoke about it, it's, it's good that it's, it's in agreement. Um, I also want to, um, say this is great for the para-pro assessment. I know that, since I've been on, we've heard it a few times, we actually had someone come and talk about it. So I, I like the superintendent's report. Um, uh, one question that I have is, when, this is being uploaded to the website, it's being uploaded as a PDF, so it's not being translated to other languages?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I do suggest that, um, it's uploaded as a, a prob, probably just a, a part of a section.
On the website, right.
Yes. And, uh, you know, we're all about engagement with parents, so not everyone speaks or reads English, um, and i- if we can, um, you know, maybe within three days of, after the meeting, because only two are up there now, so not, not, I think the last meeting is missing. So I think that it's good information, it's good news. This actually puts a, a lens on where the district is today and what good news we have to share, so I want as many people to hear it, um, because it's, it's important, and not everything you say and hear is put in the item the next day. She's not here. So, um...
It won't be tomorrow.
So th- those are just, again, the, the contents of this is, is amazing, it's great, I love it. I just want other people to be able to, to see it and be able to understand it, so, um, if we can make those two changes to the website, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned.